Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the study in the city in which we live. Guide us this afternoon as we make our decisions. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
This is the November 11th Veterans Day. Happy Veterans Day to all of you veterans out there. No, 2025, meeting of the regular meeting of the Newton City Council. You have the minutes for the regular meeting of October the 28th, 2025 before you all entertain a motion.
So moved. Second?
Motion is second. We adopt the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carried. If you'll put all of the appointments that are on this agenda on the next agenda, please. The next item on the agenda today is Mr. Phillips. Do you have anything?
I do not, Mayor. Thank you.
I do not have anything today. Under new business, public hearing, application for alcohol beverage license. Hostiahina Cafe LLC. This is 941 Georgia Highway 34. Reason is a new business. This is a public here. You're here for that? Thank you. Appreciate you being here. We'll open a public hearing at this time and ask if there was anyone here who would like to come forward to speak to the issue. Seeing no one come forward, I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time. Is everything in order? And the applicant is obviously here, so I'll ask for a motion on the issue.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Motion is second. That we approve the application at 941 Georgia Highway 34. Reason for a new business. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carried. I'll ask the applicant, when, you're a new business, so when do you open?
Next year.
Okay.
Next year.
Oh, next year. Okay. All right. Well, thank you for being here. Wish you luck in the city of Noonan. Thank you. Okay, the next item is also a public hearing, application for alcohol beverage license. This is the location of 1329 Bull'sburg Drive. This is also, Reason is a new owner. This is for retail on premise, pouring sales of distilled spirits, malt beverages and wine. I'll open a public hearing on this issue at this time and ask if there's anyone who would like to come forward to speak to the issue. See, no one come forward. I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask if the applicant is here today. Thank you so much for being here today, sir. New business again. We appreciate you. When will you open?
We are open, it's just that you owners just changed it.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. New owner. That's right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, so we've closed the public hearing. I'll ask for a motion on the issue.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Motion is second. We approve the application as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carried. This next item is also a public hearing for an application alcohol beverage license. This is for pouring sales of distilled spirits, malt beverages and wine. 440 Noonan Crossing Bypass West, Building 200, Suite 201. This is a new business. I will open the public hearing at this time, and you're the applicant?
Yes.
I would, thank you for being here. We appreciate it. When will you open?
Either beginning of December or end of November.
Okay.
Till TBD. We're getting close.
Well, congratulations. We're glad you're here. Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to come forward to speak to the issue? Seeing no one move, I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time. Everything is in order. I'll ask for a motion on the application.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Motion is second. We approve the application as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carried. The next, I think we have Mr. Moody is here today with a request from the Housing Authority, the city of Noonan, to construct its final ARPA home at 28 Westgate Park Lane.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. Ms. Sandra Stroger from the Housing Authority is here. She'll be presenting on behalf of the Housing Authority.
Ms. Stroger?
Hello, everyone.
How are you?
I am well. We constructed our first home for Johnson Street. It's completely finished and occupied. We have 334,787 dollars and 55 cents left. And the cost to build the first home was approximately, with the land, was 260,002, 2225. So we anticipate that we're gonna be able to at least build one more home. And we're looking to put it in Westgate if we have to, but we do, would like to have a lot in chalk level. But we have been, not been able to locate a lot to put that home on.
Okay.
However, we have a lady who has donated us property, but it's not enough to put the home. So we're trying to see the lot next to, if we can purchase it. If we can, the home will be in chalk level. If not, we're looking to put it on the lot we won at the auction from the city.
All right. Okay. All right. When will you know? Do you know?
I sent a letter to the estate of the person who owns the property, and I'm waiting to hear response.
Okay. So this request by the Housing Authority, build a home at 28 Westgate Park Lane, could turn into a different address?
Yes, but I wanted to make sure, if we can't get a home, and I have to have this home built by next year, I want to be able to build a home within that time period.
Right. Well, I guess where I'm headed with that is if we approve this today, then you want to do chalk level, you've got to come back to us. Mr. Sears is shaking his head.
I defer to...
He's on the other side.
I think the question was, the money was set aside to build housing in chalk level.
That's correct. So the original ARPA application that the Housing Authority submitted was defined to chalk level. So procedurally, the council would need to allow for the application to be amended to allow them to continue to build in the same category, but outside of the originally defined area.
Okay. So this is a fallback if you don't get the chalk level property. All right. Any other questions?
No, just, is there, this is a piece of property that I know you own, because you did it at the lot. Are there any other lots that you own that are somewhere outside of chalk level at this point?
No, not for construction of a home.
Okay. Then I would make the motion that we approve your ability to use this money at this address, but not precluding you from using it in chalk level.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Everybody understand what we're doing here? Any other discussion or questions?
Jenkins, to repeat the motion, because I'm sorry I couldn't hear you. So would you mind speaking?
Sure.
Through the mic, so I can hear you.
I make a motion, or I move, that the Housing Authority be allowed to build a home at 28, let me make sure I'm saying the right address, 28 Westgate Park Lane, in addition to their ability to build in chalk level. So if they find a one, it's not committed directly to 28. It's just expanding the opportunity to 28 Westgate Park.
All right. Thanks.
Okay.
Everybody understand that? All right. I'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moody and Ms. Stroger. Appreciate you being here. The next is consideration of approval to purchase network firewall replacement. You have this on your agenda, and is any question here? Mr. Graber?
Yeah, may I bring members of the council, this is replacement software.
Actually, this is replacement software. It's a, if we were to continue in the contract we're in now, the renewal would be for 28,000. This new firewall actually is at a quoted price less than that, at 18,000. Suggesting three years service and two devices, which allows us to have kind of greater stability, save some money in the long run.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Motion is second. We approve the request to purchase network firewall replacement. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carried. Thank you. The next is consideration of project ward for server storage and switching replacement. Mr. Graber?
So this is to replace equipment that was originally installed in 2018. As many of you know, you know, there's just a life cycle for this kind of equipment. What's being shown here, inspected, suggested to be purchased is that we will see a 50% increase in memory, 50% increase in computing, and also almost double in usable storage. So this creates a lot of space for us, greater computing as we continue to move, you know, kind of technology forward. Just for your curiosity's sake, if you look at the bid tab, there is one Mavzotech bid amount at 59,960. And you may be asking yourself, why is that? Like 30% of the totals of the others? Well, they were in error and quoted professional services only when we were asking for, you know, hardware here. And so that's that. So I wanted to put a stamp, put a pin in that so you knew what you were looking at. But I can answer other questions you may have if you want to get into the specifics of the technology.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve purchase?
Second?
Motion is second to approve the purchase as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carried. The next item, thank you, Mr. Graber. The next item is consideration for amendment, Chapter 2, Section 2-217. This is Cultural Arts Commission. You, as you recall, we had this on our last agenda, had some instruction to staff. And I believe what they have captured here reflects those instructions. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Some motion to approve ordinance change as presented?
Motion is second. Motion is second to approve as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carried. Thank you. On to page two. The next item on the agenda then is consideration of a sanitation fee increase based on the Consumer Price Index. Mr. Norton, how are you, sir?
Doing good, Mayor, Council. How are y'all?
Good.
What I have before you is actually asking the council to increase the portion of the sanitation fee that the city provides, the administrative services and the brush and bulk services, 3% to coincide with what we give the increase we give the contractor in the contract. And that's a total of 35 cents total per month that we're asking for. Currently, we're trying to build that fund to where we can actually purchase the capital, the trucks that you see running up and down the road out of that fund. Currently, we have no capital budgeted out of that fund.
Right. Okay. Any questions, Council? Is there a motion? Motion is second. We approve as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Stroger.
Thank you, sir.
The next item under unfinished business, this is a presentation from WLA Studio for the draft cemetery master plan. How are you today?
Doing just fine. Hi, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us today.
Thank you.
My name's Maydi Fichetti. I'm a landscape architect and preservation planner with WLA Studio. We're out of Athens, Georgia, and we were contracted by the city at the beginning of the year to start work on a cemetery master plan, looking at Noonan City-owned cemeteries, and giving some recommendations for upgrades, both in aesthetics, capacity. So we've done some, we've done some market study, presented to a close group in the city to come up with some recommendations for both aesthetic improvements in each of the cemeteries, but then also kind of a master plan of where do we go next, in looking at some of the market data and demographics for the city. Liz Solomon is the landscape architect who's been working on the project, so I'm gonna let her present. She knows it the best.
Thank you.
How's everybody doing? And this is my little advancer here? Great. Okay, got it. Great. So thank you all for having us today, and apologize if you're not here for this. Hopefully, we won't take up too much of your time, but we've been working on this project since about, I guess, April. And there were several phases. So we did inventory and analysis where we looked at all the existing conditions in the cemetery. I'm not gonna go through all of that stuff. It was very in-depth. Hopefully, y'all have gotten to take a look at the draft report, which we sent out last week. And then, so there was a lot of looking at kind of what, you know, what the lay of the land is. We were able to produce concept designs, which we reviewed with that small group. And then now we're sort of in this final master plan phase. But I'll just kind of go over the basic takeaways from sort of each section of the, of the report. So the purpose, the overall purpose of this project was, we had a couple of main goals to basically elevate all city cemeteries to the same standard as far as aesthetics, as far as, you know, standard of level of care, all those kind of things. We wanted to anticipate future needs as far, and, you know, get a data to support that, kind of understand, you know, what the cemetery capacities are like right now, where, what you're gonna be needing in the future, how the population is gonna change. So we were able, we were able to engage consultant Urban Partners, who does market analysis data for this project. And they provided us with some really great estimates of approximately the kind of capacity you're looking at, and how cemetery uses may be changing with changing population and changing consumer preferences. We were also hoping to provide, you know, on that note of changing consumer preferences, we're looking at additional types of interment options for the city to offer so that we can accommodate, you know, the rising rate of cremations and all that sort of thing. And then we wanted to develop a strategic and flexible growth plan so that y'all have options based off of, you know, you're not overly investing in things based on changing, you know, climate with these changing consumer preferences. So options that would give you the ability to shift, you know, so this is looking at about a 15-year horizon. So we did a little bit of history and deed research to try to get understanding of the history of Noonan Cemeteries and how they've been managed over the years. I know that's a lot of text. The basic takeaways is that Oak Hill was a lot better doc, we have a lot more documentation of Oak Hill than we do of Eastview and Farmer Street and the historically black cemeteries in town. As is often the case, unfortunately, the original deeds were difficult to track down, and there are several unknowns. The deed indices don't begin until 1872, and the cemeteries predate that. So we found, you know, so kind of, probably a lot of stuff that y'all may already know. There was a few interesting things. If you're not, if you're not familiar, Farmer Street Cemetery was the first historically black cemetery in Noonan. That opened around 1828, probably earlier. That's as far as we could tell. The city closed Farmer Street in 1893. We found a newspaper article referring to overcrowding, and then opened Eastview Cemetery later that year. Despite being a city cemetery, the city wasn't really actively maintaining this. And we were, we found that through various records, that the city wasn't actively maintaining Eastview until about the 1960s. And, you know, for example, the roads weren't paved until the 1970s. Roads in Oak Hill were paved by 1949. So just a little bit different standard of care there over the decades. We were not able to determine exactly when, like segregation was removed from the city ordinances. We would have to go through a lot of, a lot of years of that to figure that out exactly. But we did find where it was in the city ordinances in 1911. A couple of interesting things. There was only two Sextons in the 50 years at Oak Hill Cemetery, which is kind of interesting. There was the same guy who kind of was there for over almost 30 years, but then he passed away, and his son managed it for another almost 30 years. Then we have like a lot more research in that, in that appendix. So if anyone's interested in that, we tried to provide as much information as we could possibly find in the scope of this project. So then as far as existing conditions, again, there's a lot more. The report's very visual. I didn't want to go over too much stuff here today, but the key findings are basically that all cemeteries in the city of Noonan could probably benefit from landscape improvements, and that's gonna be trees, you know, beautification areas, those kind of things. Right now, there's no designated group responsible for maintaining or repairing historic monuments. The way the ordinances are written is that individual families are meant to care for those individual plots. So that makes it a little challenging for some of those monuments where they're aging. There's maybe no family in place to take care of them. One of the main things we found is that the gateways at Eastview and the annex are not up to the same standard as Oak Hill. So that just means, you know, the entrance gateways maybe aren't in the same level of care. There's, at Eastview, there's bricks missing, that kind of thing. Sign engine wayfinding is generally lacking. It's a little hard to orient yourself. Section signs are out of date or missing. There's definitely some repaving issues and other things that are of aesthetic nature, things that could be taken care of pretty simply, I think, just kind of maintenance and those sort of things. And we have some accessibility and sidewalk improvements that are also necessary. And then just a couple more sort of aesthetic things. But looking at the expansion area of Oak Hill, Oak Hill is rapidly reaching the point where it's running out of capacity. Will need to be doing expansion in the next couple of years. And the expansion area has some pretty significant environmental concern, or environmental constraints with the topography. So that's just something to consider, and how we move forward with the expansion plans are basically based off of the environmental constraints. We did an operations analysis to understand, you know, staffing capacity and that sort of thing. Right now, the city lands, or the cemetery landscape crew is really killing it. They're doing a great job. But they, they operate really well, but they're understaffed for the amount of acreage that they're currently maintaining. So that means they don't really have a lot of capacity to do any additional tree care and those sort of like more, you know, detailed types of landscape maintenance. They really just have time to like mow and go. So they're doing great with the resources that they currently have. But y'all upgraded your cemetery software this year, which is a really great step from records management standpoint, and also will be great for customer service. You'll have better data to understand where people, you know, what plots have been sold, all that kind of stuff. So I think that's gonna be really helpful and was a really great move. We found, we went through all the hard records here in City Hall. I think one recommendation we have is that those should be cataloged, digitized, and stored archivally, basically, just some simple stuff. As far as facilities, the stuff we, basically what we heard from staff is that the, you know, the facilities at, that are at Oak Hill are functioning well in the office and that kind of area. But as far as the actual landscape maintenance facilities, they're undersized, and they have a hard time storing equipment out of the weather and those sort of things. So those could really do for some upgrades. And also, we took a look at the city cemetery ordinances. Right now, we believe that they're unnecessarily restrictive with respect to the types of markers and the uses of the cemetery. Right now, you couldn't really just go for a walk in the cemeteries as the ordinances are written unless you had cemetery business to do. So part of what we have in our report is some recommendations of how to, how to sort of change the ordinances to allow for more flexibility. And one thing we heard from staff was that it would be nice if the markers were able to be more creative and more artistic, the way some of the historic markers are, but the way that the ordinances are currently written doesn't allow that. So as far, and then we also looked at sort of the current services that the city's offering as far as interment options and pricing and those sort of things. Pricing is in line with other Georgia municipal cemeteries. Y'all upgraded your pricing structure this year. That was a good move. Now it's sort of, sort of up to a standard. It was very low before. What you're currently able to offer is just in-ground burial, so there's no option for cremation interments. So that means that if you're cremated and you want your remains, you know, interred next to someone who's buried traditionally, that's just a cremated remains taking up the same amount of space as a full body burial, which is inefficient use of space. So, you know, there's a lot of, we did a lot of research on changing preferences and found that, I think nationally, up to 80, it will be up to 80% cremations by, in the next 10, 15 years. So it's, as things are moving forward, people are moving more towards cremations as sort of the preferred interment method. So there's a lot of options for interment of cremated remains. It includes column burial, which are, you've probably seen them. They're sort of walls that hold a niche. They like, they have a niche, and they have like a, that's like where you would put an urn. So there's, this can be creative. It can be like within a garden setting, things like that. Urn lots are essentially the same as a traditional burial space, except for that it's much smaller. It's like a three by three versus a five by, five by 10 space. So it's just more, you still bury the remains, but in a smaller space. Scattering gardens are where, it's a designated place where people would scatter cremated remains, and they can have different memorialization options. Like I said, there's a lot of visuals of these things in the report, just to give you a sense of what those options are. of what those options are. Another option could be offering like a non-denominational chapel or a pavilion that provides an option for families to have a small service or just a gathering of some sort. And then, other like landscape features would be just things that add to the cultural value of the cemetery. And then, we also considered natural burials, which is something that y'all might not be familiar with. It's also called green burial, but it's essentially a different way of approaching traditional burial that involves no, basically no embalming and the remains are not placed in a vault. They would just be in a, it's a shallower, you know, the graves are not dug as deep and it's essentially like a more sustainable option. So, that's something that we considered as changing preferences. People might want something more environmentally friendly. Like I said, the rate of cremation is expected to rise pretty high. So, we're anticipating the mix of burials to cremation to, you know, the way that Urban Partners looked at it was that Noonan may not rise as quickly as the national average. So, they sort of took the existing, you know, we looked at the existing data from the past 10 years of the rate of cremation interments at city cemeteries versus burial and they extrapolated that. So, they anticipate needing about 2,700 burial spaces and 676 cremation interment spaces within the next 15 years. So, at Oak Hill, that comes out to about 1,800 and the majority of cremations are likely to be at Oak Hill. Right now, cremations are really uncommon at Eastview. We've had like one or zero in a year, in the last 10 years. So, not very common. So, most, most of those are likely to be at Oak Hill just based off of past data. And that kind of comes down to the, where the rubber meets the road is that Oak Hill currently only has a capacity for about five to six years at the current rate unless expansion into that new area begins. So, Eastview, on the other hand, has about a 65 to 70-year capacity based off of current burial rates there. So, that's, that one's in good shape. But, with the Oak Hill expansion, it, it's hard to make long projections like this, like I said, based off of the changing interment trends, but it has the potential to be 70 or more years of capacity depending on how the approach. So, this, this chart is really just what I just said, but this is sort of the nuts and bolts of it where we, where we came up with those numbers from Urban Partners. And there's a lot more of this information in the report if you're really interested in digging down into the numbers. Historically, about 65% of all, all burials in Noonan are at Oak Hill and 35% are at Eastview Annex. So, that's where we're coming up with those percentages and how, you know, how that, those capacity numbers from. So, then moving into the master planning process, we first did concept design level where we kind of came up with three concepts for each site. So, we're, what we're doing here is looking at areas of opportunity. So, at Eastview Annex, there, these two images are of this central area at Eastview Annex is sort of just like an open field right now. And, you could perfectly go well along just adding bury, you know, this has already been plotted out, you know, to just be rows of burials, but to elevate the cultural value, add some aesthetic improvements, we kind of came up with some concepts for this area so that you could sort of have more to look at when you get there and have more of a place to enjoy and more of a place to walk around and, and have some, you know, amenities. And this lower picture is of the current soil storage area. There's no current maintenance facilities available at Eastview or Eastview Annex. So, the state of that isn't really great right now, given that there's, you know, sort of nowhere to hide any of this stuff out of sight. So, looking at these three concepts, we kind of came up with these based on, you know, just sort of different, you know, just different acts, you know, different alignments and try, you know, trying to look at it from just like an aesthetic perspective. But, a lot of the features are pretty much the same, like between the different options. So, the first option we looked at just has like basically an alley of flowering trees. It has a garden at the center, some different walkways. And any of these options could potentially have cremation interment, like a, you know, columbarium or other feature added. There's the way that they're designed, it would be easy to add that at a later date if that were to become necessary or, or desired. So, the second concept we came up with is just a little more simple design. We have this circular walkway with a central, central axis. It kind of creates a long line across the cemetery. This one, you know, probably the main difference with this one is that there's a pavilion at the end. So, you'd have something to look at as you're walking, walking down the path, adding some landscape improvements. The third option is a little bit more of an activation of the space. So, that one would include a chapel or a pavilion type of space towards the front, a little parking area, a restroom facility that would only be open during, like during actual events such as a funeral service. And, this one has like, has a garden. So, we kind of looked at all of these options and talked with staff and we were able to come up with, this is our final option where we kind of combined the alleys of flowering trees with the sort of walkways from concept two. We kept the pavilion. I think there was a fountain in the original plan. Y'all said you weren't into fountains, so we got rid of the fountains. So, a few features that this, that this plan adds is there's a new entry gateway at Eastview here where, in line with what's at Oak Hill. So, that would be a mortared stone gateway. We're showing an information kiosk right at the front. So, you'd have a place to kind of figure out, you know, this would be orienting you to where, you know, where the sections are, where your family member may be buried. This could include a digital sign that you could actually look up by name and fi, figure out where your family member is buried. We're extending sidewalks into the cemetery to provide ADA access. Right now, they kind of just cut off before you enter the cemetery. And then, we're showing a soil storage building that's sort of shielded by those trees and like a more formalized maintenance drive to kind of tie all those things together and tuck that off to the back there where you wouldn't see it as much. So, at Eastview, we were essentially just trying to upgrade the aesthetics and, you know, sort of improve the look of what's there because this is a very, this cemetery does not take burials anymore. It's pretty much full. You know, so we're just basically improving what's already there and we're constrained by the burials that are already there. So, there's not a ton of space to add a lot of stuff. But, to the west is a, is essentially like a power line easement. So, we're suggesting seating that with like a wildflower meadow just to improve the aesthetics. Again, with the entrance gateway here, trying to improve the, you know, the entrance aesthetics. And then, we're showing the same sort of wall and gate that was recently added at Oak Hill, that kind of treatment along the whole roadway there with flowering trees. So, those are sort of the main takeaways from that. And then, we're showing adding signage and sort of improving the pavement there to elevate the aesthetics again. And also, a few sidewalk additions as well. So, then for Oak Hill, we first took a look at the maintenance area and we, what you're looking at here to the left is the existing circulation patterns. And as you can see, it's very like squiggly, kind of hard to get in there. Staff told us that it was very tight, hard to get in and out with equipment. So, what we're showing is an expanded parking area for staff or visitors. We're actually showing moving your existing soil storage building down to the bottom, bottom right there, just so that it's easier to get in with equipment. And then, we're showing a new facilities building that would be able, basically with tall garage doors that you'd be able to pull in and out and then have a easy flow of vehicles. So, all your equipment isn't getting stored out in the weather and vulnerable to theft and all that kind of stuff. So, that's pretty straightforward with that one. As far as the expansion area, that's about a 22-acre area. The forest is about 50 years old. There's actually some really nice hardwoods in there. So, there's sort of an opportunity to consider how to selectively remove those trees and maybe not remove all of the trees. And if, you know, the reproach were a little more delicate in retaining the existing grades, you probably have, you're, what we're basing our recommendations on is how we can reduce the amount of stormwater necessary, you know, the amount of runoff that would be produced. So, trying to work with what's already there and kind of take advantage of the land. And there's also a small, a small parcel sort of right when you walk into the, when you come into the cemetery, off to the east it would be, that right now, we're not certain exactly what, there's some limitations on that site of what's able to be done there. And we, we need the city attorney to sort of clarify for us exactly what we're able to do on that site. But, it has a lot of opportunities for potentially a garden space or cremation interment. So, for that site, we looked at three different options. One is sort of showing a columbarium-focused garden space. One is showing more of a memorial type of garden. And the third is more of a, you know, an informal scattering meadow that, you know, those were, those example images at the top are just sort of aesthetic, what it, what it might look like sort of thing. So, staff recommended that we basically decide which of these we would like to do based off of the expansion area and how we would, how we choose to approach that. There may be more cremation interment options needed if we choose to not do that in the, in the expansion area. So, in the expansion area, we sort of looked at three different, very different concepts here. The one to the left is if y'all were to sort of business as usual, continue the grid as it exists. So, the existing grid, while it appears simple, is very difficult to extend into this site because it's very featured. It, there's a lot of topog, topographic change. There's a lot of drainage swales, existing swales. And there's only, there's about like three different drainage areas. So, it would be difficult to extend this grid all the way across without incurring, have y'all ever been to like a Costco where they have the big flat parking lot and then the 50-foot wall and then the giant stormwater basin? That's, that's what we would end up with. So, I, I don't think y'all want to incur that level of investment. And aesthetically, it wouldn't be great and it's not, it's just not great design. So, we're, we're not really going to recommend that. So, this concept is what you could do with the space that's available, but I don't think it's really that effective as far as, actually, the burial density ends up being pretty low because the grid ends up using up, a lot of the actual available land gets used up by, by roadways. So, it actually has a pretty low burial density per acre. So, concept two is sort of trying to maximize the amount of burial space, but also taking advantage of the existing topography and, and those features. So, that's trying to provide these cremation interment options up there towards the center, the top center, the sort of circular features. I have a detail of that we can look at later. We would be sort of taking advantage of some topographic features there and then aligning the roadways to the existing topography and sort of limiting the amount of roadways so that there's less impervious surface to have to manage with stormwater. And then, concept three was sort of a little bit more of the aspirational, where we're playing around with different concepts, sort of catch-all plan where this wasn't really intended to be like a take-it-as-it-is sort of option, but it was presenting a bunch of different potential features that could be available. And so, there's a natural burial section at the bottom. There's a scat, long scattering nature kind of path at the center. And then, at the top, there's memorial gardens and crem, scattering gardens and cremation interment options with kind of like winding paths in those urn, urn lots and those kind of things. So, that was sort of exploring a lot of different ideas just to put that out there. And then, the feedback we got from staff was that we liked option two the best, but that they wanted to keep a, you know, a few options from option three. So, this is actually a two-parter here. So, it didn't all fit on one. So, this is actually, goes all the way down here. So, in the north half, we're recommending phasing out these improvements. So, phase one is continuing this, this, these three, in the purple there is phase one, those three sections that look exactly like the grid that you already have. Those were already planned, I believe, by the city engineer. So, that would be sort of the stopgap measure of trying to fill in, you know, kind of, you already have this plan, fulfill that, that section before you're moving into this major expansion. So, phase two would be the major expansion where you're moving all the way up into this whole parcel here. And, at the center, there is a, basically like a loop road and there would be columbarium walls lining the loop road. And then, there's urn lots surrounding that with a little walkway. And then, the central axis feature is stairs that go down to another small garden feature and would, would get you down. And there's also basically ADA ramps parallel with these stairs back and forth down the hill. So, it takes advantage of the existing topography and while basically allowing for the greatest density of burials here. And with the different drainage areas that you have, what we're looking at is essentially instead of doing a large stormwater basin, we're looking at doing small fire retention cells at the base of all of these burial areas and retaining some of the existing trees to add built-in character and just sort of like reduce the amount of stormwater runoff. In phase three there, we're showing a flexible option so that could, we're showing it as a natural burial area, but it could be traditional burial as well. It's just an option. So, it's something we want to talk to y'all about, about what you're interested in. And then, towards the lower half, this is sort of all the like existing conditions improvements. So, we're just recommending some paving improvements, some additional trees. And then, the sort of four circles there with the orange walkways around it, that's, that's that church parcel area I showed you earlier, the concepts for that area. So, so a lot of different options here. We're recommending, you know, basically making stormwater improvements, accessibility improvements, paving improvements, a lot of stuff. There's a lot of detail in there. So, I don't want to take up too much more of anybody's time. But, oh yeah, there's a little detail of that area. So, you can see how you would walk either down the stairs or down these ramps to these tiered garden areas. So, this is actually like a topographic feature of like a knob, oops, a knob and then a lower knob. So, it's kind of taking advantage of that topography. So, I threw a lot at you. I know this is a lot. So, again, back to those goals, you know, we're really, all the recommendations we're making are trying to bring all the city cemeteries up to the same standards aesthetically. So, we're recommending both, you know, kind of maintenance improvements, but also capital improvements, general improvements to the cemetery care and the visitor experience. So, those are, you know, that would be your signage. That would be your landscaping, those kind of things. And then, with the expansion plans, trying to accommodate those future needs. So, I'm going to just open it up to questions.
Questions from council.
Yeah.
Well, I've got a couple.
Sure. Yeah.
I really liked his presentation.
Thank you.
He did a great job. You know, as you know, we've already moved along and trying to make them all the same. We've approved Farmer Street. I think we've got some other ones coming. So, we're kind of catching up. But, I have a couple of things. All right. You know, I'm a businessman. So, I kind of look at the cemetery and, you know, we buy a lot and you never have to pay for it again.
Right. Yep.
Versus when you, you know, buy a house, you pay the property taxes and that maintains things around. So, the business model of this is, you know, different, you know. But, do you have any data from other communities on cost per acre or some metric, is how much they spend on maintenance?
On maintenance?
That you could share maybe. You can do, I have to do it right now, but maybe down the road, you share that was, say, how are we comparing to other places on that? Because you mentioned.
I was, I didn't get that data from the city of Noonan, but we can get that. Yeah.
And I think there are metrics especially related to staff and how much you pay, you know, to, to maintain each of those. And I, I think there's a summary of those in the report, but it, it's not necessarily how much does it cost the customer per acre, but it's how much it costs to maintain per acre and the number of staff required. So.
Okay. Good.
I know, we definitely have the number of staff. Then, we have a recommendation of number of staff.
Okay. Good. I probably missed that. Okay. Good. I will follow with, sorry, please. I should have read my document better then. Well, thank you for having me. All right.
We have, yeah, number of staff, but cost, we can definitely add.
All right. And then, I'd like the way you're talking about future needs.
Yeah.
And it is very interesting, you know, the space requirement or what space that we have and what our lifespan on that. And I have something to ask you though. You mentioned our ordinance on walking cemetery use only. Now, and I can imagine why we have that, right? Because you have to way, have a way of keeping people from doing what we don't want them to do.
Right.
But, I grew up in Noonan. But I grew up in Noonan, I learned how to ride a bike in the cemetery. I mean, it's a great place to walk, and y'all, you go there any day, people walking, running.
Yes.
It's a great place to take your children. Once we get all the roads paved everywhere, it's going to be a great, all these cemeteries. So, you know, and also I feel like, cemeteries are a very reverent space. Obviously, if a cer- service is going on, we need to, it needs to be real quiet.
Right.
Like, drop a pin quiet, in my opinion. But if it's not going on, I, I just feel like to, and this is no pun intended, but, but to keep it alive, we need to have people moving in the cemetery all the time. So I, I really glad you brought that up, and I'd like for us to kind of look at that, how that could work with an ordinance change, to, to make it a place not like a park, but like a park, where we encourage you to go visit, at the same time, when we have a service, we mean it. It's quiet.
Yeah. And I thi- I think that that's a good point I will add specifically. The recommendations I made are essentially that, you know, basically leave it up to the discretion of the cemetery manager as far as what is deemed an inappropriate activity, but right now, you couldn't take a walk through the cemetery without being there for cemetery purposes. And not only is that unenforceable, I mean, it's, you know, it's just impractical and unwelcoming. So I think, like you said, cemeteries are public spaces, and, and a lot of times, it's the only public green space that's maybe in someone's neighborhood, you know? So I think, thinking of cemeteries as having cultural value and a place to enjoy and reflect as, and, you know, like, maybe there's certain activities that are unsavory, you don't want those there, but you could, you could spell that out while still allowing for public use, I think.
To me, the last thing I want to say is, if we open it up to movement like that, part of me says that we could justify treating some of the expenses as a park, and we could-
Yeah.
Right, so, thank you.
Anyone else?
Very well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Been waiting on this for a while, to be able to see what you all would come up with. Seeing the designs that you came up with, though, and the one you're recommending versus Eastview Annex versus Oak Hill, I see that you were trying to correlate the current trends with burials in Eastview versus Oak Hill and the alternate types of burial. But I dare say that that data was taken with the disparity in place.
And that, and that is-
And that could change.
It definitely could change. And we were hoping that by providing more flexibility in the design, that if the need and want is there to add something like a columbarium, that that would be very easy to implement. With, if you just have rows and rows of burials, there's nowhere to add anything, but by building in those garden spaces, plaza spaces, those kind of things, it leaves flexibility to add those things if they're needed or wanted. Right now, they're not, we're not showing a demand, but that could absolutely change in the future, I think.
Yeah, I've got relatives, as a matter of fact, all of them, because none of them are at Oak Hill. So I would say that if there were more attention and opportunity, more people would want to be over there, because they're no longer segregated. People could choose to be at Eastview.
Yeah, absolutely.
As opposed to at, at, um, Oak Hill. And I'd like to see alternatives called out and prepared for and designed specifically into Eastview's Annex.
Okay.
For people who want to be over there.
For cremation specifically?
Yes.
Yes, okay, sure.
I do have another question. I saw the retention cells that you had called out in Oak Hill. My first concern was flooding. I'm like, well, wait a minute, you know, we do these big structures so that they will flow and have the water as far away from where you don't want it to flood as possible. So having them closer to them makes me think we're increasing our opportunity to flood that area if we have a downfall. So, you know, I'm trying to get a little bit of better understanding of why it's that way.
Yeah.
And if that increases the chances of flooding in the cemetery itself.
So the short answer is no, but good question, though. I think, you know, there's sort of different philosophies of stormwater management, and, you know, traditionally, but, you know, that, sort of the old way of doing it would be pipe it, pond, pipe, pond, you know? That was sort of the old way of doing it. And in more, you know, recent years, basically, we've been changing the, and I'm not a civil engineer, but I work with civil engineers all the time, and there are other ways of approaching stormwater. So you, you would still be doing these calculations to determine your drainage area and the capacity needed to accommodate that drainage area. So what this does is essentially break up all of that capacity to, you know, if you think about the way that this, and I'm sorry, I don't have that diagram up, but the way that the site is sloped is that there's three different ways the water's going, so to get all that water to go to one big pond or three big ponds would be, it would be difficult to get it to go that way without a lot of piping and that kind of thing. So this approach works with the existing topography, and you sort of actually like catch the water before it flows further downhill into other natural areas and that kind of thing. So you're catching sediment and other unwanted, you know, things getting, entering your watershed, so you catch it sooner in its flow pattern. Does that, does that make sense? Yeah.
Yeah.
So what those are called, and what we're recommending is by, called bioretention cells, so they are essentially like working with nature. So it's sort of a similar, following a similar theory as to like how nature manages water and slowing that water down as it moves down the hillside, you're catching it all the way down. So it's info, has an opportunity to infiltrate before it needs to reach a big pond and then get piped somewhere. Does that-
It, it helps, thank you.
Yeah.
No, it's, I can see erosion control being part of this as well.
Yes, yes.
Because you're slowing that water down.
Yes, the less velocity, the less-
It won't sheet flow so much to different pla- I got you.
Exactly, yeah. So it would still obviously need to be engineered, and one thing we talked about before we got here is that it would be nice to get y'all some rough capacity expectations, so we're going to try to do that for the final report of, you know, where your drainage areas are and exactly, not exactly, but, you know, we have a rough idea of capacity and how big those basins would need to be.
And then my last question is, I know you said you had a focus group that you worked with to evaluate these. I, I have to say, I don't know anything about the focus groups, so I wanted to make sure from staff that whoever you spoke to, what was that composition of the focus groups?
Well, there wasn't, yeah, there, we basically kept it very small. It was just, you want to speak to that, Asco? Yeah.
Happy to. They were city staff, but outside the city hall, we engaged all the local funeral homes and funeral directors with surveys and opportunities to everyone have an opinion. So that, if that what you're talking about, or you're talking about internal to the organization?
No, I'm talking about external.
Yeah, so all the funeral homes and all the funeral directors in town that we know currently operate and work in the cemeteries, they were engaged with surveys.
Okay, and were they engaged with the options for design?
They didn't show a lot of interest, unfortunately. I didn't get any feedback, so, I got very limited feedback, so I-
I mean, this is a, a huge upgrade that we're talking about, and I would really like to see some community input on this.
I agree, yeah.
So my, my suggestion is that we figure out how to get the community involved in this redesign, because they're the ones who are going to have to use it. And then the people who have relatives in these particular cemeteries, I'd like to see what they have to say about it.
Yeah.
I have two questions.
Okay.
Again, thanks. You're very comprehensive, I liked what you presented. The invasive species, because I saw that several times in there, what is it, what's, what would be the, how invasive are these invasive species? And how would the control of that be? What are we looking at for trying to mitigate that? And is it on all the cemeteries? You know, what are we looking at?
It's really just, it's in select areas, so I used to do, this was one of my jobs right out of school, was invasive species control, so it's kind of a thing that's always on my mind, but, and I'm a native plant person, I'll admit it, I love native plants. So what, what, exotic, exotic invasive species are species that basically are not from this region, they're usually not from this continent, and they're species that will outcompete native plants, and they're destructive ecologically. So they, you know, basically take over habitat that other, you know, wildlife would basically be dependent on native species for food sources, nesting, that kind of thing. So, so what involves removing inva-, there's a state list of exotic invasive species, and there, I provided in the report basically a best management practices for how to approach removal from, and treating that from a management standpoint, and then also, you know, kind of like chemical herbicide application methods, all that kind of detail. I provided resources for that at the end of the report. And you're lucky in that the natural areas at Noonan Cemeteries don't have a ton of exotic invasive species right now, but you don't want to keep letting that go. And that goes for all natural areas that the, the city owns. It'd be something you'd want to enact on, kind of on a, like, citywide management level that you need to have kind of an invasive species task force ready to go and start removing that stuff, so, because it takes regular maintenance to be on top of it, and that's kudzu, privet, all those kind of common things that you see. Yeah.
My, my other question then was kind of a technical question, if you don't have an answer, that's fine, is the scattering meadows and gardens areas, over the course of time, scattering that, does that change the soil composition and require its own maintenance in and of itself because of that?
It, it does change, it would change the soil composition. So best practices for that would be to mix the cremated remains with, there's basically like an enzyme that you can do that sort of neutralizes, because it's very alkaline, you know, the ashes are very alkaline, so, yeah, over time, so that'd be something you'd want to have a policy in place. It's not like anyone's just going to come there and be scattering remains without anyone knowing that's happening. It'd be something they need to set up, you know, with the cemetery superintendent, that they're going to be doing this at this time. You walk them through the procedure and having them, you know, mix the ashes with this, this neutralizing enzyme that ideally not cause any negative impacts, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to check on that, like, if it'd be city staff doing that, you know, how we're going to work that out. So, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else, anyone? Great report, we appreciate you being here today.
Thank y'all.
There's no action needed on this, I don't think. This was just a summary report brought for council.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your hard work-
Thank you so much.
-dedication. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
The next item on the agenda is Jefferson-Jackson-Clark Intersection Improvement Update. Mr. Craver, do you have that?
Yes, sir. Native grade members of the council.
For the sake of time, I'll take you to the bottom half of the first page of the agenda item as it moves into the second page. Essentially, our conversations with the Georgia Department of Transportation resulted in their lack of support for the design as previously approved. There's some justification in there that is copy and pasted from an email I received from the district traffic engineer on October 31st. You can read that. It calls out various reasons. I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm not going to dispute the gentleman's opinion. However, this is a response to the action taken by this group. We told you we would go to try and secure a permit from the Department of Transportation. Once we did so, we would put the project out to bid and we would come back with that. Well, it doesn't appear that the Georgia Department of Transportation is supportive of the design that was approved here by this body. So at this point, we're returning to you to let you know that, to, you know, kind of turn the coin over and give you a little bit of what I believe may be a little bit more positive news. Mr. Phillips and I and a couple other members, Mr. Clark, had a conversation with the same district traffic engineer just about a week or 10 days ago, and on or before 11/18/25, so next week, we believe we're going to receive correspondence that's supportive of an update and signage that would allow us to kind of make vehicular movements through that intersection a little bit easier to navigate. For those of us that live here, we know how to travel that intersection, but those that are not from here, we believe that we've got an alternative signage option out there, and I'll just name it, says Carrollton, this way. Downtown Noonan, this way. Instead of the litany of numbers that can be confusing, and those are primarily on two approaches. As you're traveling west along Bull's Borough, past the entrance to Oak Hill Cemetery, and then as you travel north and out of downtown on Jefferson Street, kind of by Dairy Queen trying to leave town. So helping individuals in vehicles understand using common terms instead of the numbers we have today. So that's the update.
So I look forward to the common sense approach that Georgia Department of Transportation will bring to that signage project. Any other comments or questions regarding this? That ends our regular agenda today. I don't think we have a motion for executive session, but we do have a work session that was supposed to start at 3:15. It's 3:30, let's take a 10-minute and start that at 3:40. Is that okay with everyone? All right, thank you for being here today, ladies and gentlemen. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion second.
Motion a second to adjourn. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like, so, motion, thank you.